Uh, now she's online. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I would like to call to order the physical year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget workshop. Our fearless leader is not here this evening, so I'll be flying this plane. Uh, I got a few housekeeping rules I would like to go over real quick. Uh, we're just here to receive information. There's no motions will be made and we do not have to have a quorum in order for us to operate. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Brenham?
Here.
Pugh?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Livingston? Teresa?
She is here.
Weaver? Baron?
Here.
Aline?
Here.
Mackey? English?
Present.
Newton?
Here, and I'm sitting next to Allison Teresa who's here.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk. Item number two on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Brown, is there any changes or deletions to the agenda?
No recommended changes.
All right. Any discussions?
To adopt the agenda as, uh, published.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly segmented. Madam Clerk, can you call for the vote, please?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver? Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey? English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Onto item number three on the agenda is enterprise funds. Mr. Brown, you now have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, very briefly, for those who are following this process annually, uh, we are required to, uh, submit to you as county, uh, administration, I mean, as a county administrator, a recommended budget, uh, for this body, uh, being the county council to ultimately review, uh, and approve to carry out, uh, the work, uh, of the community through Richland County government. And as a part of that routine process, uh, we sit down and we receive information from agencies, internal and external, requesting funding, uh, to support the work that they are doing. As a part of that process, we have these budget work sessions, uh, in which, uh, you receive information via presentations. Uh, and, and this particular budget work session is specific to enterprise funds and millage agencies. So as printed on the agenda, uh, Mr. Chair, members of, uh, this body who are present on today, uh, we will proceed with that process and we do have some of future scheduled work sessions as well. Uh, but we will start, uh, this budget process with enterprise funds. Uh, and we do have a budget director who's gonna have some just very initial, uh, remarks and then we will proceed, uh, Mr. Chair, as presented.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Director Wilkerson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, good afternoon. Thank you all for, um, let me come speak you, speak to you briefly today. I do just wanna make a quick introduction. Um, we have several team members here from the budget team that have... Can you hear me? I'm sorry. Is it, okay. Uh, we have several team members from the budget team that are here and have been an integral part of this process. Um, so I do wanna take a moment just to recognize them if that's all right. Um, so first I have, um, our new, uh, director, Ms. Brittany Hammond. She is joining us. Um, she's very new to the role. She's been here for about two weeks, um, and, um, has hit the ground running, so we're very appreciative that she, she's here with us. And then for some of our other team members, we have Natasha Baron. We have Ojetta O'Brien. I see Oscar Rizales. Chanel Jones. See any other? Did I miss anyone from our team? All right. Um, so that's the, the budget team and like I said, every single member of this team has, uh, played an integral process in, in putting this budget together in this presentation today. Um, you know, we do have an agenda for you. As Mr. Brown mentioned, uh, the first item will be related to enterprise funds, so I will turn it over to, uh, members of the county administration that, um, are the director for the, uh, some of these funds and then we will also turn it over to millage agencies, um, for their presentations as well. Um, so at this time, I'd like to invite, uh, Director Maloney up if it's already with you, Mr. Chair.
Um, Mr. Brown, uh, Director Wilkerson, is it possible for us to give a quick overview of actually what enterprise funds are for those that are not familiar with it?
Absolutely, yes, sir. Um, so an enterprise fund is, um, is, is pretty different from our, our general fund and some of our other governmental funds. Enterprise or, enterprise funds are those funds that are actually run more like a business. So, um, the revenues that come in are generated from, uh, usually rates of service, so charges for service. Um, the enterprise funds that the, uh, the county has is the airport fund, the solid waste fund and the utilities fund, which covers both water and sewer. Um, so each of those, um, charges a rate for the service that they provide. And then, um, the rate should cover the expenses, um, to run the operation. So that, this is more, when you think of a, um, a government, this is more run like a, a, uh, a business model versus a general fund or governmental fund.
Thank you, Director Wilkerson.
Absolutely. All right. I will turn it over to Director Maloney to walk us through, um, or I guess Director Maloney and Mr. Sebalas to walk us through the airport fund.
Mr. Pugh?
Recognize, ma'am.
Um, while they're walking up here, one of the questions that I will have that they can address at the start is if I should be referring to the packet that we received on Tuesday or the binder that's on our desk, just so that I start out looking the right place.
Absolutely. Great, uh, great question. Um, the packet that was handed to you on Tuesday is the correct packet. Thank you.
Hey, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, sir. Uh, good afternoon, Council. My name is Peter Sebalas. I am the Airport General Manager for the Jim Hamilton LBO Owens Airport and I will give you the presentation on the Jim Hamilton LBO Owens Airport.
Just before you get ready to start, sir, just so you know, you have five minutes to speak, okay?
Oh, yes.
All right, thank you.
Understand. Thank you. Okay. And so I'm, I'm gonna cover the facility, uh, overview of the, of the, of the place and airport operations and economic impact and the airport revenue as an enterprise fund and highlight some, uh, major, uh, cost of the bu- budget for the budget. So, next slide, please. The facility is a hundred and two eight, eighty-two acres big with a five-thousand-foot runway. There is a nine-acre, uh, aircraft apron out there that's capable of supporting up to ten small, uh, medium business jets and thirty aircraft, uh, parking spots. There's twenty thousand gallons of fuel storage capability. We do have an automated weather system for real-time weather reporting and we have an eight-thousand-plus square foot terminal and business center. Uh, specifically for the sake of revenue, we have eleven hangar buildings over two-hundred thousand square feet that are capable of basing over one-hundred airplanes. Next slide, please. From an airport operations standpoint, uh, to date, uh, and this is goes as a twelve-month look back from today, uh, we have over, uh, close to twenty thousand operations that have occurred out there at the airport. Uh, during the same period, I'm happy to report that's a, oh, uh, it's an increase of over twenty-five percent. Uh, previously it was, last year it was fifteen thousand six hundred and eighty-four. Specifically, what's very important for this airport to note is that the airport supports air taxi services. That's, uh, aircraft charters that come in for supporting, uh, the business community. And we had actually eight-hundred-and-sixty-six air taxi aircraft that operated in and out of that airport, which is significant. Uh, likewise, we had over twenty-five op- hundred operations of turboprop and turbofans and the reason that again is significant is because those, uh, consume the most fuel and buy the most fuel at the airport, which again helps the bottom line for the airport. Out there currently, we have ninety-nine based airplanes. There are eighty-eight single-engine aircraft, seven multi-engine aircraft, one jet and three helicopters. Our annual e- economic impact, now granted, this number is a little bit dated. It is a two thousand and eighteen, uh, do- uh, year value that was, uh, done by the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission. But it's still very, uh, close to where we are, if not over, a sixteen million dollar impact. Next slide, please, thank you. Under airport revenue, our hangars are completely full. Right now, we currently have one-hundred percent occupancy. And the hangar lease revenue, because it is a fixed revenue per se, is re- relatively stable. As, uh, we did have a little bit of an increase over, uh, two years ago from, uh, uh, five percent and then, uh, and then it's also pointed to note that the FBA, FBO shared, uh, starting this past year increased ten percent and it will again also next year. Fixed base operations, fuel sales also remain stable, uh, two percent increase over the last ten years. Uh, currently, there are current, this past year is projected to be over a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, uh, gallons, which is a tremendous growth per- potential for the new FBO when we seek the contract, new contract. Next slide, please. As you can see, the revenue stream is three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars, um, and I'm gonna skip a line there. The personnel cost is projected for FY twenty-six to be two-hundred-and-four thousand and that includes my position and a custodial position. Uh, we are seeking to have an administrative, uh, coordinator position start up in, in the spring of next year uh, to assist me in the management of, of the, of the administration of the airport. Uh, we do have two capital projects on the table right now that we're working through right now, um, is concluding one that's a major rehabilitation project. Uh, grant funding, uh, is, is, the project cost actually, excuse me, is over, uh, four million dollars and we will be getting FAA grant funding for it, but there is a, a required local match that we have to provide. And then we add our cost allocation that includes, uh, services that are in- are internal with the county at about fifty thousand dollars. With the fund, the use of the fund balance, that should give us a total budget of seven-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars for FY twenty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, does any of my colleagues have any questions? Mr. Livingston?
Just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Cause I look concerned. Recently, when you went to the change, you got the new fixed base operator? You said there's a ten percent increase?
Yes, sir.
What about service and, and, and operations? Is that still pretty much?
Well, the, that, the, the ten percent increase is part of the extension contract that was done last year. Uh, and that's something separate. The variable revenue that we receive with the fuel sales is, is a little bit higher.
That's what I was mainly focusing on, yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Teresa, you recognize?
Thank you. Um, and one of the things that my colleagues might not remember or, uh, uh, have had presented to them is, uh, specifically the amount of match through federal dollars. Uh, do you have a number of how much federal, um, funding we have leveraged through, um, matching, um, projects?
Um, currently, right now, it, the total is about approximately, um, I wanna say right now at a half a million dollars because we're in a, in a period where we're only designing projects. We're not actually doing the big stuff that's, uh, causes a lot of expenditures. But this is a great point to make, uh, the two-hundred-and-seventy-five reflects, uh, the most of five percent cost to the county. So if you say, if that's, if two-seventy-five is only five percent of what the cost of county, the capital project is well over that. I mean, so...
Thank you, and also wanted to make a statement around the at the airport has been the, uh, new beacon that is much higher and has, uh, frankly, saved a lot of trees in Owensfield Park, at least, and, and probably made the airport much safer.
Oh, yes, ma'am, it has. It has been a tremendous help for us.
Correct. That's it for me.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Director Maloney, you recognize?
Uh, co-piloting is Cindy Castellucio, General Manager of Solid Waste and Recycling.
Cindy, you recognize?
Oh, we, we, we'll, we'll be sharing in this.
Oh, okay, y'all gonna tag team me together, okay?
It...
Well, you'll recognize along with Director Maloney, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're ready to go to slide one. At the council retreat, we did give some updates on the operations, uh, of, of the services, so, um, we'll, we'll be as brief as we can to meet the, the five-minute timelines.
Okay. Just review, um, just an overview of the services that Solid Waste, uh, Division provides. Of course, everyone is, I'm sure, very familiar with our collections, operations. Um, and just wanted to kinda give you guys again a big picture of the ninety-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven customers that we service in that, uh, program with a potential of a, a million services every week and how important, of course, that is. Uh, but then also, if you're familiar, is with the, with the landfill operations, we do have just shy of, uh, seven hundred acres, a little over six hundred, uh, where we house our class-one landfill, which ours are, um, uh, cleaning debris or yard, uh, land clearing debris, which would be, um, your, um, wood debris. Uh, but then we also have our C and D landfill, um, and then our closure as well. So those that have been, uh, previously closed to the MSW and C and D. Uh, we also have, of course, our recycling program, uh, that services, of course, our cert curbside programs, but then also our four major contracts, our, our, uh, curbside Sunoco. Uh, we also have HHW, our Household Hazardous Waste, which we have our collection events, our e-waste and our hauling from our drop-off centers. Um, and then we also have twelve used oil collection sites. I wasn't sure if everyone is familiar with some of these things. I wanted to mention, uh, our lease agreements that we have for those drop-off sites, which would be our Lower Richland and Clemson Road, uh, recycling centers. And then our Special Services Division, uh, which is actually housed at four hundred Powell, um, and is under the direction of our General Manager George Wilson, which has, um, uh, nineteen employees, which we'll see if, uh, in the next slide, uh, but is the refuse control code enforcement. So, um, what like we refer to as solid waste is that we're the education and information, um, they are the enforcement. Uh, our services personnel, just to give you kind of a picture, we have thirty-seven full-time positions in solid waste. Uh, so four under management, which is typically your admin, uh, collections team is gonna be about sixteen full-time staff. And our recycling, uh, and drop-off centers is eight full-time staff and then our Special Services Division, which is the nineteen.
Okay.
Next slide. Just to give a quick snapshot of our curbside collections, um, which is our, of course, our, our most significant in our budget line item. Um, we sit at thirty-nine million, uh, five-hundred-and-ninety-one, six-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. I'm sorry, my eyes clearly, I've aged in the last few years with Richland County. I can't quite say. Thank you. Uh, and then just wanted to give you an idea with the curbside, um, what it would cost for our, um, curbside contractors will range anywhere from twenty-three dollars and thirty-six cents to twenty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents per customer. And that's per month. Um, and then your backyard services, uh, which are forty-two dollars and four cents and range from forty-eight eighty-two per customer. And it consists, of course, of eight service areas, um, serviced by five contractors. Other, um, ones to mention?
The rest of that slide is, is the breakdown of our budget and we can go to the next slide.
Okay, we'll be quick. Of course, as you guys are aware, the CPI affects a good number of our curbside collection contracts and this is just a snapshot of what they have been over in the past few years. Next slide, sorry, trying to get quick through there. So this year, of course, we're just to give you a snapshot of what we've got coming up and then what will be in the next few years. Um, we do have, of course, we'll be on, on the agenda in the next couple of meetings, is our MSW disposal, um, which is, um, a good, a significant amount. It's increased to, to almost four million dollars. Uh, and then our eligible for renewal, our contract areas, um, they were all, um, signed in twenty-twenty-two and are ending the, end of their three-year, uh, contract and can, are eligible, of course, for renewal this year, uh, and then through the year to twenty-twenty-seven.
Excellent. So when we go into the proposed rate, uh, we do have, again, a breakdown of the various, uh, elements of the countywide services, um, management and, and all, all the items that are expenses, uh, that are shown on the left. You'll notice that they add up to eleven million dollars and on the, on, on the right, the revenue is at nine-point-eight million. So this year, we're showing some rollovers. Uh, two million dollars worth of rollovers that are in the recycling program at three-point-eight-three-four-seven-hundred. Uh, that three-point-eight million was, would, would, would be, uh, actual expenses of one-point-eight, but we are doing the, uh, Lower Richland drop-off capital plan and, uh, a Ballentine, uh, drop-off center plan. So we're actually showing what's rolling into the budget. Uh, so down below where it shows, uh, use of fund balance, uh, two million dollars on the right, uh, two million dollars even, uh, that is that rollover. Uh, this, uh, this amount requires a three-point-six percent increase adjustment in the, uh, curbside collection and milcap for the, uh, the, the, uh, landfill millage.
It's your time, Director Maloney. Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Yep, Councilman Weaver, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Director Maloney, I just had one quick question. I believe I'm correct in saying this shows up as a separate line item on folks' tax bills at the, in the fall? I believe I'm correct in saying that? Okay. So my question with that is, I know there's a lot of different levels of service and you can't say exactly, but have y'all figured out just what the average increase is gonna be across the county? Is it, you know, five-dollar-a-month increase, ten-dollar-a-month increase? I know it depends on the district and the, the contractor, but...
We would wanna get that to you in writing.
Okay.
We, we'll, we'll, we'll do the investigation on what that would be on an average.
I just, I'd like to know that figure, cause when we're out in the public talking to folks and, you know, they say, well, my tax bill, my, my solid waste went up. I'd like to have an answer for that, just what the average is.
The particular slide that just happens to be up shows that it goes from, um, three-eighty-five a year, three-hundred-and-eighty-five a year to three-ninety-nine. So that is reflecting that three-point-six percent increase monthly. Uh, the difference is just a little over a dollar a month, a dollar fifteen...
Or maybe fifteen dollars a year?
Thirteen-eighty-eight. Thirty dollars and eighty-eight.
So that seems pretty reasonable, given inflation. Okay.
And it, and it does not vary from district. It is across the board.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Director Maloney.
Miss Wilkerson is going to address. As, as well as, uh, Deputy Director Tariq Hussein, or Johnny, as he is affectionately called.
You both are recognized at the same time?
Hi, how you doing?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pugh. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Johnny really walk through the, the nuts and bolts of the water sewer system and then, um, on any of the financial questions, I'll, I'll feel free to jump in.
Thank you very much. We'll start with the first slide where the geographical location of RCU is showing up. So, as you can see, we have a northwest region area served by, uh, utilities as well as in the lower Richland area. And the distance between them is about an hour drive for our team members when they go down to the lower Richland to serve. In the northwest, uh, area, we have Armo Sewer, Shepans Sewer and Murray Point Water. Murray Point also has sewer. Um, the southeast region, we have Town of Eastover Sewer, Lower Richland Sewer, Franklin Park is served with sewer and water. Town of Hopkins is served with sewer and water. Gadsden Elementary, Hopkins, elem- middle school and Hopkins Elementary are also served with sewer and water. We closed their, uh, lagoons last year or year before last year. McIntyre, we get them online when we did the southeast project, so now we are, uh, s- uh, serving a sewer for them as well as Pond Drive. Pond Drive only has water. Next slide, please. Slide before that. Yeah. Challenge, uh, your sewer and water systems? One? Yep, that's one. This one shows, uh, our sewer and water system. So basically, northwest region has Armo, which we only is, um, do the sewer services as well as Shepans and Murray Point has both sewer and water. Southeast, Town of Eastover, we only, uh, do their sewer. They are our major customer down there. Lower Richland, um, which is also a transfer area. We do, uh, sewers, uh, services for them. Franklin Park, which has water and sewer. Town of Hopkins, which has water and sewer. Gadsden, just like I mentioned earlier. And all the schools have water and sewer system. Uh, McIntyre Bay has sewer and Pond Drive has water. Challenges? Uh, basically, the construction costs have gone up, um, by forty percent or more, um, since twenty-twenty. We have few bidders that are bidding on the projects, um, escalating equipment cost and the time to, uh, drop or have those equipment delivered is also longer now than before. Escalating equipment and chemical cost, chemical cost is also going up almost, uh, on a, every six months, we hear two to three percent ri- rise in prices in those one. Uh, short life expense expectancy of the new equipment. New equipment is not as hardy as the one that we had before, so that's also causing us issues. And aging infrastructure. We have a lot of lines and stuff. They were built back in seventies, late seventies and eighties and they are causing us issues. They have breaks and they're brittle and stuff they are breaking up on. Workforce compensation and retention is an issue, uh, which we all, I'm, I guess, all the departments across, uh, uh, Richland County is facing it and we handle it as better as possible. Balancing rate and affordability, that's a big one for us. Um, as you can see on the next slide, when we go to, uh, you will see the, we have nut trees breeds and stuff for a very long time and it's affecting us. Next slide, please. The RCU water system assets. So we have Hopkins System, which has five-hundred-and-sixty-two customers and two wells that are supporting the, uh, three-hundred gallon, three-hundred-thousand gallon tank. We have Pond Drive, which has twenty-seven customers. Again, a well system with a seven-thousand gallon tank. Murray Point, we used to have a seven-thousand gallon tank, but we went and got the City of Columbia, uh, water connected because the well failed. So it was dry in, uh, twenty-nineteen and we moved over to city. Next slide, please.
All right. Johnny, if it's all right, would you like for me to talk through the rate?
Please.
Okay, great. Um, so this is our water rate history. Um, the proposal for this year is a ten percent rate increase for volumetric rates and those, um, rates are listed on the right-hand side of your screen. On the next slide, you can see the historical, uh, revenue versus expenditures, um, for, for water revenue. Um, you can see here that the top line is actually our expenditures and the green bars are our revenues. So our expenditures do app, um, outpace our revenues at this point, uh, for the water system. On the next slide, um, if it's all right due to time, could we talk about sewer rates? Um, so on the next slide, uh, we do have a proposal for a four percent, um, sewer rate increase, uh, similar to last year. Um, and again, this is to keep pace and, um, to, uh, maintain our, our reserves and to maintain, um, the capital system. Thank you.
Both? As.
Thank you. So just to make sure that I have it right, it's, you're proposing a four percent increase in sewer and then ten percent in water?
Yes, ma'am, a ten percent volumetric increase for water and then since our sewer is just a flat rate, it is a flat four percent increase for sewer rates. Yes, ma'am?
You recognize?
Sir. Um, when you talk about the tap rate, what is that rate per customer?
Tap fees? Yeah, still, we have not changed it for a very long time. Four thousand for the sewer and fifteen hundred for the water.
You recognize?
All right. Um, one more question and I understand that this is an enterprise fund and that we are looking at rates based on cost to operate the system. But can you give us an idea in terms of how we compare with, say, the City of Columbia and it's fine to include the out-of-city rate for those unincorporated customers? And I'll, of course, note that the city is using, we're using a flat rate for sewer and the city's not, so it's not quite apples to apples, but if you could...
I do not have that information in front of me. I don't know.
I don't have it in front of me, but, uh, you are right, they charge based on the water usage. That's one advantage they have that we don't have. Uh, so, uh, whatever the water rate is, equitably, they charge the sewer rate based on that and I have to get you the numbers, but they raise it every other year. They raise a sewer and the next year or following year, they ra- raise the water system rate to...
Thank you, and just, you know, and I know that they are also raising rates, but it doesn't have to come back in this format. I would appreciate having a feel for, um, how that difference looks.
Will do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, ma'am. And sir, I'm sorry. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. That, I believe, moves us on to the next section under four, Mr. Chair, which are millage agencies. And so what we'll do is, if you'll go to the next slide, so we can see how they're recognized in order. So, Mr. Chair, you were recognized at Columbia Area of Mental Health, so that they may come and present.
Now, could you state your name for the, can you state your name for the record? And you'll have five minutes to speak.
Yes, I'm Kathy Hug. I'm the Executive Director of Columbia Area Mental Health Center. Columbia Area Mental Health Center is an outpatient mental health facility that functions under the Department of Mental Health. Well, it was Department of Mental Health until April 28th. Now it's Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. Next. So we, on average, treat over 6,000 patients in Richland County. We also serve Fairfield County. The bulk of our services are with Richland County. In fiscal year '24, we provided over 86,000 services to 666,673 patients. So far in this fiscal year, we're over 71,000 services and close to 6,000 patients. Of those current patients, I did provide an age breakdown on the side just for informational purposes and some demographic breakdowns between gender and race. Of note, I wanted to show that the top five diagnoses that we work with are schizophrenia, mood disorders, which would include your major depressions and your bipolar disorder, adjustment disorder, ADHD, and anxiety disorders. We do serve patients regardless of their ability to pay for their services. Financial platform breakdown of our patients shows that 14% of our patients have no insurance at all. 38% have some form of Medicaid. 39% have private insurance. And the rest would be covered over Medicare or SC Prime, certain, certain other insurances like that. Of the uninsured, 586 are currently on a fee reduction. We do offer a fee reduction based off of income for anyone without insurance. We have about 207 employees, 182 of those are FTEs. The rest either contracts or temporary employees. Next slide, please. This next slide just shows a breakdown of some of our adult services. We try to provide a wide range of services to meet the needs of our patients. I just wanted to highlight a few. We do have a first responder support team. So we do provide mental health services to any first responders and their families. We have a mental health court, which is a jail diversion program in conjunction with the solicitor's office and the probate court. We have an NGRI clinic where we serve the residents of the county who are not guilty by reason of insanity. And we have an ACT team, which is an assertive community treatment program, which is a new mandate from the Department of Justice to serve those that do not function well in your typical clinic setting. Next slide, please. The next slide shows a breakdown of some of our child and adolescent services. This is for anyone up to the age of 18. To highlight a few of those, we have an infant and childhood evaluation team. So that is for children between the ages of zero and six. We have a Metropolitan Child Advocacy Center. It is the only state-operated advocacy center in the state. And we will have an embedded clinician at one of the Richland County DSS offices to help provide immediate treatment for those kids as well. The next slide shows information regarding mobile crisis. Mobile crisis is available to every citizen of Richland County that is experiencing a mental health crisis. It provides onsite assessment and referrals with a mental health professional and law enforcement. So our goal is to keep folks in the less restrictive environment as possible. These just show a breakdown of the number of calls that we've had, the number of times we've had to respond to the calls. And on average, our response time is 25 minutes. The goal is to be under 60. I think a response time of 25 minutes in this large county is pretty good. And the next slide just highlights some of our embedded clinicians. We don't just provide all of our services in the office. We have a staff at Transitions, Richland County Sheriff's Department, Columbia Police Department. Starting next week, we will have someone at Alvin S. Glenn Detention Center. And we are in the Prisma Richland Emergency Room. And we also have a clinician embedded at the State House. And we are in 40 different schools within Richland County. The last slide highlights our Crisis Stabilization Unit, which will be opening hopefully in a month or two. It is the second in the state. It is a residential-style treatment. So someone experiencing a crisis can go here as opposed to a hospital. It can go for 14 days. It is voluntary for males and females. And it will be a nine-bed unit on the Morris Village campus, which is right off of Forest Drive, Ferrer Road. I don't know why I said Forest Drive. Any questions? I would like to say we do feel very blessed to be recognized as a millage agency. And we just are very thankful for your support.
It's English. You recognize?
I know it will be a little... Aerial disability. I may be wrong.
Well, it's the former Daedos, DDSN, and DMH that merged together. Yes.
Coming down from all that.
Every day it's a new email or change or something.
I'm with the disability agency, so that's why I was asking those questions. And you still, have you received everything you're going to receive or you're still kind of playing that waiting game?
I think we're still very much in a waiting game.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that when we consider this, that's one of the things that we keep in mind.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else have any questions? All right, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you.
Mr. Chair, the next millage agency is the Richland County Recreation Commission.
Sir, could you state your name for the record? And you have five minutes to speak, Mr. Lewis.
Torres Lewis, Executive Director for Richland County Recreation Commission.
Ryan Insana, the Deputy Director of Finance with RCRC. Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm joined by our Executive Director today, and we thank you for the opportunity to speak. RCRC has proposed a budget for fiscal year '26 funded at the milcap figure of $19.1 million. This represents a slight decrease from fiscal year '25 funding levels due to a one-time adjustment of $1.8 million that was approved in fiscal year '25. The current fiscal year, we've made great strides in addressing aging infrastructure needs throughout the county. We're addressing funding at the milcap. I'm sorry, we're requesting funding at the milcap to keep this momentum going into the new fiscal year. Built into our budget, our initiatives address compensation for our lowest earners within the organization, which will help us attract and retain talent across the agency. We've also built in funding for longevity pay and tuition reimbursement to invest in our current workforce. Fiscal year '26, RCRC plans to develop a long-term master and strategic plan. These costs have also been captured in the proposed budget as well as plans for implementing the following capital outlay and improvement projects within the agency. We'd like to focus on increasing security through the purchase and installation of cameras across multiple RCRC facilities. We would like to focus on replacement of aging RCRC vehicles as well as renovations at Trenton Park, the creation of a pocket park in Lower Richland, improvements to the Ridgewood Walking Trail, improvements to the North Spring concession stand, upgrades to our multipurpose fields, and resurfacing of racquetball courts at Kaufman Road Park and Friars Gate Park. In addition to these, we have budgeted for improvements to HVAC systems, roof repairs, and playground systems, and athletic equipment at various RCRC facilities. Next slide. As mentioned, this year, RCRC has heavily invested in our parks and communities via the following projects. We had the Hopkins Pool and Pool House renovation, which we just recently celebrated the grand reopening. We've installed new playground systems at Bluff and Hopkins Park. We've implemented improvements to Denny Terrace Park, including ADA, accessible walkways, window replacements, and new drainage systems. We've resealed and restriped parking lots at various locations, including our Park Lane Admin Office, Park Lane AAC, the Tennis Center, Friars Gate Park, Trenton Park, and Killian Park. We've rebuilt baseball dugouts at Friars Gate Park, repainted the Rosenwald School. At Surinad Park, we repaired the gazebo, replaced a bridge, and added new benches with concrete slabs. We fenced multipurpose fields at North Spring Park, Meadow Lake Park, and Polo Road Park, replaced irrigation pumps at Polo Soccer Complex, replaced partitions at the Park Lane AAC, and replaced HVAC units at various locations within the county. We've provided some pictures of these projects for your viewing. I did want to yield the time to Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Council, for your time. As Mr. Ryan said, thank you for the increase last year and the one-time millage increase for our budget. However, we still have a lot of progress left to do across the county. We have a lot of aging facilities that are really old. And a lot of those facilities were neglected for about seven, eight years. I'm going into year two of my leadership, and we were just asking that you please consider us at the millage and allow us to continue to make improvements all throughout the county. We also have applied to seek reaccreditation for our CAPR to get that national certification back. We retained a staff member to help us with that initiative. We've also retained a vendor to help us with our 10-year master plan and our strategic plan. There will be some focus groups coming up. You all will be reached out to be interviewed to tell us what you want in your specific districts for this 10-year master plan. And this initiative will take place starting in September, and it should be about six months. Our goal, and we will in '27, go to Utah and reclaim our CAPR certification. So we have a great team together, executive leadership. Thank you all for what you do for us, your support throughout the county, the different events and different things. And we just hope that you'll consider us for this year budget. Thank you. Sir. Any questions? Any questions? Mr. Livingston, you recognize?
I can get that later if I need to. What percentage of your revenue is actually generated by things like events, rentals, and stuff like that?
We normally give a little over $1 million a year through revenue that we make off reservations, like rentals, athletics, different things like that.
Kind of stable or up or down?
What you think?
It's actually been increasing year over year.
Tracy O., you recognize?
Thank you, and I appreciate the work that you do. I know several groups that rely on Richland County Recreation properties for what they do. My question is about, you know, I see, I understand that we probably could rehab everything everywhere all at once. How do you all, can you give us a little insight about how you make decisions about what comes next on the capital improvements plan?
We try to prioritize based on the need of the infrastructure. For instance, at Trenton Park, we're in dire need of a new parking lot. We've put that in our budget this year. We have several agencies, seven facilities that AC units are 15 to 16 years old. And we're constantly just patching and patching, so to the point we no longer can patch. So we have a Deputy Director of Operations who have a construction background, Mr. Cooper, that's sitting behind me. His staff, his property management team, they go out and they do assessments every quarter. And then we break those down for the budget to see what we need to prioritize first.
Right, so I'm assuming that you're looking at safety and then...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You have like a reserve fund for capital maintenance or capital improvements?
We don't have a reserve fund as of now, but we have some properties up for sale through state law that we're able to sell some properties. And hopefully when these properties are sold, that will create some additional revenue that we can use to put into our capital improvements.
Okay, yeah, that, you know, obviously, when you get to the master planning and your capital improvement plans and you're figuring out lifespan of different facilities and things like that, it'll be nice to have some sort of a reserve fund to help you budget, schedule that stuff. So we're looking forward to all the continuation of the good work that you've already started to do here in your first couple of years in leadership. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Baron, you recognize?
Thank you. And Mr. Lewis, thank you and your team for really revitalizing the Recreation Commission and the work that you all have been doing over your, over the last two years under your leadership. It's greatly appreciated. I did have a couple of questions, and one is kind of a detailed question, and I'm fine with you all getting that, get those numbers back to me. But I would be, I would love to see what the numbers look like for the tuition repayment plan as well as the longevity plan, what those specific numbers are. If you all could get that back, get that back to me, I would appreciate it. And then my specific question is, I know a couple of years ago, the county went in and we started, we were leasing automobiles and started to replace automobiles throughout the county. This may be a Mr. Brown question, I'm not sure. Are our millage agencies not included in that lease program as well?
No, ma'am. The millage agencies would be a separate entity and would not be included in Richland County government's lease program.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Welcome, Ms. Baron. Anybody else? If not, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Appreciate you guys. Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mr. Chair. According to the program, the next scheduled agency is the Richland Library.
How you doing, ma'am? If you could state your name for the record, you have five minutes to speak.
Thank you. I'm Georgia Coleman. I am the Library's Chief Operating Officer. And currently, I'm serving as the interim director as well. Just a slight note on that, we are on track to hopefully have a new director starting in late summer, early fall. So we're really looking forward to that. First, I'd like to share a little bit of information about what we've accomplished at Richland Library in fiscal year 2025. While our impact is far and wide, we were able to work closely and collaboratively alongside other county and millage agencies and with customers to provide the support that citizens needed most when they needed it the most. Some of our unique points of impact include hosting FEMA, who were here helping residents in Richland County find wholeness following Hurricane Helene, providing more than 1,600 bus passes to increase residents' access to resources, working with ABLE-SC to audit our facilities and make them even more welcoming for people with disabilities, supporting DSS to meet the needs of vulnerable youth in Richland County, and expanding our literacy resources for emerging and struggling readers. Okay, the next slide. In fiscal year 2026, we hope to become fully staffed again and to continue creating engaging programming while providing the life-changing resources and services that our customers have come to know, love, and expect from their library. We understand that the upcoming year could look different for many of us. So we worked especially hard to put together a budget request that reflects Richland Library's true need, going through every single line with a fine-tooth comb to find any opportunities for savings. Our true need falls between the no-mill increase and cap amounts. So we are respectfully requesting an increase of approximately $600,000, which is 1.7% more than the no-mill increase amount. Next slide. Just like everyone in this room, I'm sure, we are already making difficult strategic decisions every day. At Richland Library, a no-mill budget increase could cause us to need to review and possibly freeze our staffing efforts, decrease books and materials budgets, limit programming, and pause service expansion projects. Next slide. Funding at the library at the requested level will enable us to continue offering robust, outstanding library services that enhance the lives of residents across Richland County. Thank you, and as always, for your support. We are so blessed to have a community like Richland County and a council stakeholders... We are so blessed to have a community like Richland County and a council, stakeholders, a board that we have. It is a difficult time for public libraries out there, and I feel so privileged to be here in Richland County, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a question. Does the library have any reserve funds? Sort of similar to the same question that Mr. Brenham just asked the Recreation Commission.
Yes, we do have reserve funds. We have about $7 million in unrestricted reserves.
Can you find unrestricted funds?
So, those are things that are not already assigned for things like OPEB liability and other things that we have to have statutorily or through our board bylaws.
Is there any capital improvement plans in the future uses with those funds?
So, we, we are doing maintenance as needed, but we had a wonderful, you know, Ms. English was on the board at the time, where we were able to touch every library facility, and so our facilities are in great shape, and we don't have any major capital needs right now. Of course, we always have maintenance and things that could come up.
Thank you. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you for the presentation and for all the work that the library does. And just a question, as you look at the reserves, and so full disclosure, I serve as a liaison on the, the Richland Library Board, and, and I know that you guys did pull out the fine-tooth comb as you looked at your budget. I just know that there are also people who might hear, hey, you have a $7 million reserve fund, and you're coming to us and you're asking for additional funds. Can you maybe explain, are there library policy, like certain, at Richland County, there's certain types of thresholds that we need to have in savings, there are things that govern that. So, if you could maybe address how your reserve fund relates to your thinking of your budget request, I think that that could be helpful.
Sure, so, and we have, so our total reserve fund is larger than 7 million, the unrestricted amount is 7 million, and we, we do have some, we have policies about how many months of operating expenses we need to have in reserves. We also do not, you know, we try not to use reserve funds for operating expenses, so reserves would help us as contingency if things, we have 13 facilities, several vehicles. If things were to happen across the county, we would be able to pull from reserves as needed. So, last year, for instance, we did take from reserves for escalator project at the main library, which was about a $2.5 million project, those were original to the building. And so, we were able to use reserves to replace the escalators, which was much needed.
Thank you.
So, did I hear you correctly? You said that your reserve fund is much larger than $7 million. $7 million is just what you got, what you guys have for unrestricted?
That's correct, yes.
So, what is the number for?
It is, it, it is with OPEB liability, because we are, we do have that large liability, it is closer to 20 million.
Thank you. Ms. English, and then Ms. Newton.
What percentage are you guys required, or you try to keep of that? I know Richland County?
For operating?
Yes.
So, I think, believe it's, is it six months? I think, six months, and that's part of the, that would be part of restricted, I believe.
Newton, you recognize?
And just wanted to clarify on the unrestricted funds, because again, you hear that number, oh my gosh, it's $20 million. So, the, the funds that you have that are in your restricted fund balance are restricted because it's required by law, et cetera, for legal liability. So, it's not just you said, it would be great to put this money to the side, it's that if you don't have that money, then you are violating a law?
Yes, so we do have, we carry that liability for OPEB that we have to put aside. We have our statutory operating expenses and through board bylaws, and then there are likely some other restricted funds. And our unrestricted, we try to keep a healthy amount on hand so that we will never have to come back to you. We come with operating expenses, but we try to be responsible and good stewards so that we are earning interest on that money and also not coming back to you to ask in the event that something comes up.
Thank you.
Recognize, Ms. Terasio?
Thank you, and just for the good of everybody, could you tell us what OPEB is?
Oh, it's the, what, OPEB, O-P-E-B, so it's the part that we carry, the liability that the library would carry for retirement. So, the, the portion that we carry when people are going to be retiring, and it is also, we are only, we're not even fully funded to the amount that we would like to be on that, just to be extra prudent.
I, I was watching Mr. Brown's facial expressions, I wasn't sure if he wanted to add something.
I was just going to say that I believe it's other pension and employment benefits.
Yes, that sounds right.
So, that way you could have a specific understanding what that's referencing. So, she described it just well, but I saw people looking like, okay, so that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, ma'am.
So, Mr. Chair and members, the next group is the Riverbanks Zoo and Garden.
All right, thank you, ma'am. If you could state your name for the record, you have five minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you, good afternoon. I'm Ashley Harris, and I'm the VP of Finance with Riverbanks. First slide, thank you. I'm not sure what all y'all see in your packet, so I wanted to explain this first slide. This is the template that the Richland County Budget Office sends us over for us to complete for our budget requests. And so, this template compares FY '23 and FY '24 actuals against the FY '25 approved budget and the FY '25 proposed budget. So, the FY '23 and FY '24 actuals report our final audited totals by reporting category, and the FY '25 approved column reports the current fiscal year's board-approved budget totals by category, and then the FY '26 proposed budget is what we'll present to our commissioners for approval for the upcoming fiscal year. A couple of things that I wanted to note in the revenue section of the template, you'll see on the state appropriations line that we received state funding in the three years prior, which will unfortunately not be the case in FY '26. Our state funding has come to us through non-recurring pass-through funds, which were earmarked for dozen, or for deferred maintenance projects, and so, as I'm sure you realize, the pass-through funds are being eliminated in the FY '25, '26 state budget. And then if you move down to the county appropriations line, there is where we report our millage appropriations from Richland County for each year. And I wanted to point out, oh, I'm sorry, if you'll go back, I meant move down on that template, thank you. So, I, I did want to point out, let's see, the decrease in the millage appropriations beginning in FY '25 was due to the reduction in millage having gone from 1.4 mills to .7. And then for FY '26, in those highlighted cells, we are requesting the projected millage allocated to the zoo, so I did just want to be very clear that we are, we are not requesting any mill increase. And then if you would please get to the next slide. Thank you. Okay, so this slide shows our FY '26 proposed general fund budget against our FY '25 approved general fund budget. So, each year, we propose to our board a balanced budget. You'll see that the revenues there on the left side and the expenditures on the right side for FY '26 equal, so we're proposing for the upcoming budget year 25.5 million in both revenues and expenditures. And then we break out our revenues by earned revenues, Riverbank Society contributions, and governmental support. So, Riverbank Society, for those that aren't familiar, is our private nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that supports the zoo. And you'll see that 17 million of our total budget for FY '26 will be funded through earned revenues, and that the remaining 8.5 million will depend on private and public support. And so, in FY '26, the anticipated funding coming from either source, private or public, is actually very close, being just within $4,000 of each other. And that was what I was going to point out unless, and, and if anybody has any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Weaver, you recognize?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just one quick question, I'm looking at the, your different budget categories here. I noticed rides and attractions is tripling, you're going from 561 to 1.4 million. Is that connected to the new Bond project?
Yes, sir. Yes, that is, we have two new attractions coming in FY '26, being the Solita Sky Ride, which is the gondola, as well as, it's called Sky Tykes, which is a close-to-the-ground ropes course for children. And then also, just with inflation and increased operational costs, we are, we have not upped our rates on the other rides and attractions that we have. So, we are going from a $2 rate up to $3 as well, so that would be built into that revenue number as well, which is draft feeding, Laura Keat feeding, which is the birds, the train ride, the carousel, just the name of it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
What else? Terasio, you recognize?
Thank you, and this might be a question for staff, but just looking at the FY '26 no-mill budget versus FY '26 cap budget, those are the same numbers, is that?
Yes, and, yeah, when we receive the projected millage worksheet from the Richland County Budget Office, we're one of the few millage agencies that it's equi, it is the same, so I just listed the same number in both of those columns. So, I guess our mill cap would be equal to the actual mill, mill budget.
May I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I don't see Mr. Brawley in the crowd, please stand up if you're here. So, those numbers do come from the county auditor, and I'm sure he can certainly explain more at another session, but due to, I think, you know, the majority of the reason is just due to that they're only a .7 mill, you know, going up to the cap is a formula base, and there's just, there's not much of a difference when the millage is only at .7 versus the full county being at 59. So, that, I would assume that's probably the case for them, but I would certainly defer to Mr. Brawley for more details.
Thanks, thank you.
Livingston, you recognize?
Just, just coming, Mr. Chair, you know, I asked the previous persons about their, what amount of revenue they're generating. I ask that question because I'm always extremely impressed with our zoo, but this is one of those agencies that are well with generating revenue compared to what we give them, it's significant, and so I think we, we need to be feel comfortable and blessed to just have a, a, any, any nonprofit in our community who is generating, generating a significant amount of revenue and asking us for a small portion to help them keep doing what they do for our community. Just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you.
Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you, and I don't know if this question is for our finance team, but Ms. Harris, you mentioned about how we decreased the millage rate for the zoo, and so when we decreased the millage rate for the zoo, the original intention was, we'll decrease what's obligated, and then we'll see if there's additional funding, or if we can, you know, make that whole through our H-tax. And so, my question for you is, on your FY '25, '26 operating budget, there is a line right above total government support that says H-tax, ATAX, and PRT. Is that number there including the fund, like, kind of a request from Richland County that it would take?
Thank you for that question, actually, and I didn't know if, if we should mention that in the, since it is just the millage budget discussion here, but I did confirm with Madison reached out, and she said that would be the recommendation from her team, and that, of course, you all would need to vote on that again this year, but we have incorporated in 1.5 million within that H-tax line that would be coming over from Richland County to make us whole again with the reduction in the mills.
And so, then my question for staff would be, when we get our budget books from you, there's, where appropriate, there's a recommended number, so will that number for the H-tax for the zoo come pre-populated, or is that something we're going to have to make a note about to mention during our discussions?
So, right now, how, how we have it in the recommended budget book, where we'll go into more details next Thursday, we do actually have the recommended number of, it's roughly 1.5 million, I don't have it offhand, but it is very similar to the amount that was approved by County Council last year.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just a clarification, so you're saying it'll be?
Recognize, sir.
You're saying you'd have, you'd be requesting allocation for H-tax and millage?
Or you recognize?
Thanks, Vice Chair. I do want to make you all aware as well is that we have reached out to the auditor about potential look-back millage, because that is something that would potentially be available to this agency if council has an interest. He will be here to discuss during the general fund discussion on the 13th, so we can certainly review that, and I will also forward information to everyone related to what, what I do know of, what he, what's been conveyed to us about potential look-back millage for this agency if council would like to consider that as an option.
Howdy, good. Mr. Brenham, you recognize?
Okay, so, thank you, Ms. Thomas, for the information, but there, there's no need for look-back millage, right, to meet the proposed budget at the no-mill?
Mr. Chair, my ma, or Vice Chair? I have been approached by several council members related to millage and funding for this particular millage agency, because the millage was reduced last year. Of course, this year's mill value and cap were projected by the auditor at last year's millage numbers. Because prior to last year, this millage agency existed based on Act 388, some council members were interested if there is the potential to be able to increase the millage rather than using hospitality tax dollars if there were a request, so that would be the information that I will be sharing.
Okay, and, and I think that does relate back to, again, the, the fact that they're banking on approval of the requested amount for H and ATAX?
That is correct.
From the county, all right, thank you. And I, I also just wanted to commend the zoo for taking whatever steps you needed to, to, to make the books balance. Again, you're, you're out $1 million from the state that you had last year, and I see even higher numbers than years before that, and I know they're difficult decisions when it relates to trying to find ways to increase revenue, but you've, you've made them, you've planned, and you've got a balanced budget here, so thank you for the work you did there.
Thank you.
What else? Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next group is Richland One School District.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, Administrator Brown, we thank you for the time to present to you this afternoon. I'm Craig Witherspoon, Superintendent of Richland One. I have doing the majority of the presenting is Ms. Sierra Bing, she is our budget director.
Good afternoon, council. As Dr. Witherspoon mentioned, my name is Sierra Bing, and I'm presenting on behalf of Richland One, and we have the leadership of our board chair, Mr. Robert Loman, and again, Dr. Witherspoon as our superintendent. For fiscal year '26, Richland One is projected to receive 2.5 million in new revenue for fiscal year, only 2.5 million in new revenue for fiscal year '26 compared to the 6.1 million in new revenue received in fiscal '25 from the state. And you guys received the handout earlier today. It's just to note that currently, Richland One receives 34% of our revenue from the state and 66% of our revenue from the county, so I just wanted to noted that in our presentation as well. This graph here is very important. This graph shows what we have received from the county since 2022, and as you can see, this is the timeframe where Esther funds were allowed, and we were going through the pandemic. This is a reflection of prior year, so in 2022, that was 4.5 million over fiscal year '21, 2023, 13.8 million over '22, 2024, 15.9 million over '23, and in 2025, we're only projected to receive an additional 618,000. And it's only important to note that during this timeframe, there was no mill increase as far as our- there was no mill increase as far as our revenue. Next slide, please. In your packet that you received today, there is a detailed breakout of our budget request. So I wanted to note that we have fifteen point two million requested in new programs, personnel, as well as salaries, some of the things that we have that are state mandated from the state, such as our bus driver salaries, we having to increase that two percent. Um, our teachers, there is some mandates there. Health insurance is being mandated as an increase as well. So we too have to take on those impacts of those state mandated, um, requests. So I wanted to give you guys an idea of where we stand at with our requests to you all as the county. Um, Richland One is requesting the mill cap for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and the entire amount of the mill cap, which is six point six million, is dedicated to salaries and teachers, um, as well as our staff. So I just wanted to point those things out to you guys. We are here if you have any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone have any questions for Richland One? Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if you could repeat your breakdown of state and county funding? Because my math didn't math when I, what I wrote down.
Yes, so Richland One receives thirty-four percent of our revenue from the state and sixty-six percent of our revenue from the county.
And then just for my information, if you're able to answer this question, is that a comparable breakdown for other school districts across the county? Or does it vary by region? How does that work?
It varies by region.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Weaver, you recognize?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, quick question on the, um, I'm not sure what page number this is, but Richland Schools One Budget Proposal, it's got two percent teacher increase, two percent bus driver increase. Then it has non-teacher staff and bus driver increase of three point four million. Do we know what the average percent is increase for, like, administrative staff, um, beyond teachers and bus drivers? Do we know what that?
Average is two percent. And that is just account cost of living.
Just across the board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What else? Ms. English, you recognize?
Um, thank you for your informa- um, what number do you all have in reserve?
So we are required by the state law to have a minimum amount of eight point three three percent in reserve.
Mr. Brenham, you recognize?
Do you have an amount beyond the eight point three three in reserve?
Required by state law or currently?
Currently.
We're currently working to meet that.
Okay, so you're not, you're not above?
We meet the minimum.
Yeah.
However, we're currently working to exceed if possible. However, of course, that is set aside for emergencies. Our reserve is to set aside just in case we have emergencies. For the reserve that we have, we haven't had an increase in our millage, um, over five years. Um, and so we have been working to exceed if possible. However, there has been limitations due to that increase not being, um, received.
Just real quick follow-up, so on that, on the number there, the fifteen point two eight seven million, is that above last year's budget? Wh- what does that number represent?
This is, this is the requested amount above fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, and so one-third of that, almost one-third of that is health insurance increase?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, you recognize?
Mr. Chair, let me, uh, do a, a follow-up in terms of the re- reserve, um, um, question. Part of what we do in balancing the budget, and same thing as we approach this year's budget, um, we do look at funding where we can with some one-time items. Uh, but if you have things such as, um, salary increases and reoccurring, you can't use fund balance, if you will, for reoccurring and ever-increasing items. So as we craft a budget, uh, those things that we can look at, as, as Ms. Bing said, where we might be over, um, the, what the state allows and what, what we still need to have, we do look at that, but, but if we're, and, and, and the request this year from the county, uh, is, um, solely, and it's even more, that we're trying to absorb internally with some, with some cuts and redirections, you can't do that with, um, this is all on, on, on budget, on, on salaries and, and, and those required steps and the like, that we can't use fund balance for.
I guess I have a question. Um, I know you gave us a percentage when he asked what was the revenue that was in, uh, reserves. Is there a number?
As far as the required from the state?
Yes, ma'am. Is there the number that you guys have in reserve is the question that I'm asking?
We'll bring you back.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Ms. Newton?
Thanks, and so just wondering, when you look at the budget for Richland One, and this might not be the right way to ask it, so, um, but what is the amount spent per pupil in Richland One?
So on average, according to RFA, it runs about, and it's above nineteen thousand dollars per pupil. Um, however, I will have to get you the correct number based off of the state RFA, um, review.
And, and part of that, what's included in that would be, um, not just state, but, but because of special education and, and, and the like, that would change some of those numbers, and that would vary by district as well.
Okay.
Given how additional funding, whether federal or state, uh, comes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna get Ms. English in there, and I'm gonna get you, Mr. Brenham.
Thank you, Ms., um, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, and I know this is kind of hard because we don't have all the numbers in yet. Um, but between the twenty-four and twenty-five, there was a sixteen mil, um, increase. Um, understanding that, if I remember correctly, and my council members can help me out, that was still six million short of the request, I couldn't remember. That's okay. Um, have we heard any numbers from the state yet?
The state has not finalized, they're actually preparing to go into conference.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Brenham, and then I have Mr. Livingston.
And, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Let me add to, um, uh, Councilwoman's English, um, uh, question. What we do get from the state in terms of salary and, and, and the like is only at seventy-five percent. Twenty-five percent is borne, uh, locally. When you, when you talk about salaries. And we try to be competitive with that salary amount.
What percentage would?
Seventy-five percent of that is funded by the state.
Thank you.
Twenty-five percent is local.
Thank you.
It's Livest.
Yes, uh, uh, I believe now at some point, uh, we'll do the process. I'd like to have a list of those specifically mandated state initiatives that's, that's affecting your budget.
Mr. Brenham, I apologize, you recognize, sir?
No problem. Uh, can you tell us anything about plans to dispose of the asset that's the property out there at Kaufman Road?
That is still being looked at, as you know, um, construction has stopped, and the board did vote to, to end, um, uh, the contracts associated with that. Some of those final numbers are still being worked through with the contractors.
But do you, do you have a plan thereafter, though?
Uh, the board, the, the board is working through that.
It's to be determined.
To be deter-
All right, thank you.
Else? Thank y'all so much. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next presenter would be Richland Two School District.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I hope everybody's having a great day. First slide, please. I am Dr. Kim Moore, the very proud superintendent of Richland School District Two. We're here today to talk about our budget. As you can see on the first slide, our mission and our vision, but more importantly, our core values, which are learning, belonging, continuous improvement, and joy. That is what we ground our work in, in Richland Two. As you can see on the next slide, we have over twenty-eight thousand students, and that is K through twelve. When you add pre-K to that, our number goes up to over twenty-nine thousand students that we are currently supporting. With forty-one schools and centers, making us the fifth-largest traditional school district in the state of South Carolina. We are the largest district with military-connected students with over fifty-six languages. Sixty-three percent of our students live in poverty. But in spite of that, we still have an eighty-seven point six, eighty-six point seven graduation rate. Our general fund is, as you see there on the slide. I am going to be tag-teaming this presentation today. I know I'm speaking fast because we only have five minutes and lots of information to share. But I have a, the blessed privilege of working with the finest CFO in the state of South Carolina, and that's Ms. Nancy Williams, and she is going to take over.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, I wouldn't expect to know.
Good to see you, no pressure.
No pressure. Okay, so in this slide, you, um, I'll walk you briefly through our revenue projections for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, and so in this slide, you will see that our anticipated, um, revenue from the state as provided through the State Department of, um, Education's projections is roughly six point three million dollars. Um, midway at the slide, um, a no-mill, um, budget would produce one point five million dollars for us. That's not included in here because today we are seeking, um, a request for a twelve-mill increase, which would bring in approximately six, um, million, three hundred sixty-nine dollars, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, we plan to use some fund balance for some non-recurring, um, requests. Um, and so we anticipate sixteen point seven, um, million dollars, um, in our budget increased over the twenty-five budgeted amount. Okay? Okay, so, um, we have the details of our budget in the next three slides. But what we decided to do was, um, to allow you to review those details at your leisure. But today, um, just kind of summarize our total budget in five key areas of focus. Um, and they center around competitive salaries and staff retention. Um, and as Richland One has indicated, the state, um, is requiring a two percent bus driver salary increase. So that's included in our budget as well as a one thousand dollar teacher salary increase. Um, we are, um, being able to fund, uh, step increase for our teachers as well as all of our other staff. Um, we plan to use some non-recurring funds for a, um, one-time retention bonus for all staff and, um, a, a, a sign-on bonus for new special education teachers and instructional assistants. As it relates to health insurance and benefits, um, we will, um, of course, fund the increased cost of health insurance for all of our staff. Um, our budget includes, um, special education support, where we will fund twenty-nine additional positions that include teachers, teaching assistants, registered behavioral technicians, and other specialists to support our students with special needs. Um, we plan to maintain our current class sizes and then use some non-recurring funding, um, from our fund balance for curriculum purchases and to, um, provide a one-time allocation, uh, per student allocation for library materials in all of our schools. And then, um, the last bucket here relates to safety, school safety. Um, and then we will just be, um, able to fund, uh, the contractual increase to our SRO contract with the sheriff's office. And right now, we're estimating that to be a two and a half percent increase, uh, per conversations with the sheriff. Okay? And wow, we sum that up, that's, that's it for us because we covered all of that, the next three slides. And so we just thank you for your support of Richland, um, Two, our, and our, you know, all of our schools, and we thank you for your time and consideration today.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Weaver, you recognize?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, I do have a question, I believe this is y'all's page, page eighty-four, I believe. Uh, says consultant for new ERP system, four hundred thousand. What, what's an ERP system?
So we, essentially, that's our accounting system. Um, our resort, our enterprise resource planning system, um, encompasses our accounting system, HR system. Um, and so we're planning to use some, some, um, non-recurring funds out of our fund balance.
Okay, it's like software or something?
One time, sorry.
And it's not, that four hundred thousand is not for one person. It is for the process of bringing the new system on. Our system is, is old and out of date and does not perform at the level that we need it for a large school district. And so it's a five-year process that we have to go through to bring a fully-aligned system online. And that's why that funds, those funds are there.
Okay, thank you.
I got Mr. Livingston and Ms. Newton.
Yeah, just same previous question is, at some point, a list of the state mandates in terms of the impact on your budget.
Okay, um, just, um, really quickly on that green slide, uh, the first, yeah, the first four items are mandated by the state.
Side with the teacher increase and so forth, you're saying?
Sir?
Side with the step increase for teachers?
Uh huh, the first, the first four items, which equates to about four and a half million dollars.
Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you, sir. And, uh, same question that I asked Richland School District One, if you could tell us what your cost is per pupil? Or expenditure investment is probably the better word.
We, we'll get that to you because I don't want to misquote anything right now. I don't have the number in front of me, but we'll get it to you.
Thank you.
And Ms. English and, uh, Mr. Brenham?
Thank you, same question as before, your reserve and is it, this still the eight point three percent, three three?
Uh, yes, ma'am, the state law mandates that we maintain at least one month's worth of reserve, which equates to eight point three three percent. For us, that's approximately thirty-three million dollars. Um, board policy and GFO best practices requires two months, um, so that's about sixty-six million. And, um, and, um, in order to maintain our current bond rating, we need about eighty million. And right now, at the end of, um, what we're projecting to do with, um, capital projects and, um, using fund balance for these one-time initiatives, we'll be right at eighty million dollars.
And I'm keeping my eye on the state, I'm listening as well. So I understand with districts one and two that operate. Thank you so much.
And just for, uh, your consideration, in your packet, you will see some of the things that we are funding from our, our fund balance, which is, as Dr. Witherspoon said, non-recurring dollars is the only thing we can use for our fund balance.
Hold on one second, ma'am. Mr. Brenham, you recognize?
The graph with the green fields, um, that, is that showing that projected new revenue with no-mill increase between state and local is seven point eight four four million?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and what, what was last year's budget total?
Uh, tw- roughly twenty-two million dollars. We had, the, the increase from last year for twenty-five over twenty-four was a twenty-two million dollar increase.
Okay, and then what, so what was the total budget?
Uh, total budget for twenty-five is three hundred and eighty-six point seven million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you, and I apologize for asking a variant of a question that was just asked, but I was writing notes, and I want to make sure I didn't miss it. So on this slide with the, the, the famous green field slide now, um, everything on this list is a, a mandate from the state?
The first four items.
The first four.
The first four items.
Okay, thank you.
And what else you'll see on there is our desire to make sure that while we are giving our teachers an increase, and definitely they deserve it, we also want to make sure that we're taking care of our classified staff. Um, and that's what you see in item number five, and then just the step. It's just a step increase for them, as well as, um, our pop- special education population has gone up significantly. And our students there need to have additional support and resources to meet their needs. And so that's why you see, uh, the special education compliance in there.
Mr. Weaver, you recognize?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, just quick question on item number five, we're talking about step increase for all other employees. Is that one percentage across the board? Does it vary? I know Richland One mentioned their percent increase, but...
Our, um, our step increase, so the change between each cell on our salary schedule, it varies, it's not consistent. Um, roughly about one and a half percent change, um, but it varies depending upon the salary schedule.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Recognize, Ms. uh, Teracio?
Thank you, and I don't know if you have the numbers with you, but, um, do you have an idea of how many, um, of these, uh, all other employees this would affect? Is it a hundred or is it fifty, is it?
I don't have the numbers with me if I, and I, I really hate to throw something out there that's not accurate, so I...
Got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next presenter would be Midlands Technical College.
Good afternoon, everyone. Before we're ready to go, my name is Greg Little. I am the new president at Midlands Technical College. At least I can say new for another month and a half, but I'm gonna cling to that as long as I can. Uh, but it is great to be with you today. Uh, we've got a number of things we'd like to talk to you about. If you'll go to the next slide, please. I, I want to start with uh about the scope of, of who we serve in our community, in our region. We serve about twenty-five thousand students. And when you combine our academic and continuing education programs, we are actually the state's largest technical college and the third-largest higher education entity in South Carolina, only behind the University of South Carolina and Clemson University. Uh, you'll note there that seventy-three percent of our credit students are in career programs. We specialize in careers. That's something we're very proud of. And as one of our instructors recently put it, quote, "We make people good at doing stuff." And it's actually one of, I, I may make that a T-shirt somewhere down the line. Um, you'll note on the next slide, I just want to say, uh, talk a little bit about how the percentages roll out. But thank you for your continued support and partnership in helping us serve so many people here in the Midlands. If we'll look at the next slide, um, our budget request this year is pretty straightforward and in alignment with our requests in the past. Uh, our requests will help with college operations, technology, major repairs, renovations, and updates. We continue to grow as a college, and I'd like to talk to you about that in just a second. And this funding is essential for that continued success. A great example of your support is the Center for uh Business and Information Technology Building that we recently constructed. Uh, that is an incredible space for our students to learn and actually this year earned a design award for its architecture. And if you've not been there, we would love to have you out and, and walk you through that building. It stands as a testament, as a great op, uh, as a, a great example of our partnership and your support for the students in this area. Um, I do want to talk about growth for just a second. If we can go to the next slide, um, near, when we look at our growth, Midlands Tech has uh really experienced a fantastic year in terms of enrollment. We were up nearly three percent in the fall year-over-year. You'll see there eight percent in the spring, which was one of the highest-growth areas in the state. We're up five percent for what we're looking at in the summer, and we are tracking already for a very strong fall semester. Um, MTC has become the gold standard for apprenticeships throughout the state. We gave you two examples here with Prisma Health as, as well as the partnerships with the SEADA. These are great examples. They continue to grow and provide critical workforce needs. Obviously, with Prisma Health with the medical field, but also with the um mechanics and, and the, the technicians who work on vehicles. There's a great need for that as well in our state. And while it's not here, I do want to say that we are gonna host the state's first esports competition, the state championships for the high school esports competition on Saturday. So if you drive by the Beltline Campus and you see a lot of action going on there, we will be hosting that as well. Uh, if you'll move to the next slide, please, and I'll very quickly hit these next two. Um, welding continues to be one of our most popular programs. We are actually at capacity and are working right now to find more ways to accept more students into that program. We've also become one of the state's largest providers of EMT training in the state, and we are the first college in the country, not the state, in the country to receive that accreditation. And we're very proud of that because when you're going, uh, when you're having an emergency and you pick up the phone, you want to make sure somebody is qualified, is walking through that door. And that's who we're provide, that's who we're producing at Midlands Tech. Um, this, the slide's a little outdated because we did participate in our South Carolina competition for Skills USA, and we are going to the national championships next month. And we hope to bring home some more hardware for our college and represent uh Richland and Lexington and Fairfield County very well. Uh, our last slide, I just want to say I love bragging on our college because so many great things are happening. However, none of those things could take place without your support and, and how you help us. And I just want to say how thankful I am for the history of us working together and the future of us working together as well. Thank you so much for, for everything that you do for uh Midlands Technical College.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Teresio and then Ms. Newton.
Um, my question is, so I, I see, uh, you know, your, your partnership with Prisma and the automotive dealers and, and those sort of things. Um, I don't know if there's anything that you can share, but do you have any, um, what, what does the future look like for Midlands Tech in terms of expanding um opportunities for people here in the Midlands?
Oh, that's a great question. I, I, I appreciate you asking that. Our skilled trade bro, programs are bursting at the seams. In fact, we are at capacity in welding, building construction technologies, HVAC, um, industrial maintenance, those are the big four. And then, obviously, with Scout Motors and Mechatronics coming. So can I talk about these two things separately? I, I'll be fast, I apologize. But we're really excited about both of these opportunities. The skilled trade programs, we are actually working right now with the, the legislator to help fund addi, or have additional funding to expand our skilled trade programs because we are truly at capacity. We had to turn away four hundred students in the fall for our skilled trade programs. Um, our welding program, we're still nine weeks away from the deadline, and it's already at capacity for the fall. So we have a lot to do in terms of expanding skilled trade programs. And the reason we want to start there is because we know for a fact that the demand is there right now. Now, what we've also learned about skilled trades, actually in the last week, is with the, with the VC Summer Site coming back online, uh, potentially coming back online in the future, that will redefine a lot of the skilled trade programs for this area. Welding especially, but all of them, building construction technologies, HVAC across the board, that's gonna have a major impact on the demand locally. So it's, it's, it's hugely important for us to act now in terms of expanding those programs. So that's, that's on one bucket. The other bucket is the Mechatronics bucket. And so, Mechatronics for people, I tell people, Mechatronics, that they repair the machines that make the machines. That is, that's essentially what they do in one sentence or less. As Scout Motors comes in, Mechatronics is going to be a huge demand for us. Last year, we had about sixty-five students in our Mechatronics programs. At the same time, Greenville Tech had about three hundred and sixty-five. So we're going to be expanding that program. We're at ninety students now, and we're gonna continue to move that forward. Of course, we have EV programs that are coming onboard. If the VC Summer Site comes onboard, we have nuclear programs coming onboard. So that it's never, there's never been a better time for the skilled trades. And they're highly lucrative careers. We used to talk about um the three D's when it came to manufacturing. It was dark, dirty, and dangerous. Now, they're the four H's, high wage, high demand, high mobility, and I'm forgetting another H just in this moment, but uh, or highly skilled, thank you. And so you have those four things. And so, there's a lot of expansion opportunities in Midlands Tech, and we think we're just scratching the surface.
I appreciate your enthusiasm for all of this. Um, I have a long-wanted a culinary school in, in Richland County. Uh, would love to see if there is any opportunity for that to happen in, in any way in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You recognize?
Thank you, I di, I didn't have a question.
You did have a question.
I did not, but now, now I have one. Just wondering if you, and I should remember, but I don't, if you could give us a picture of the overall funding of Midlands Technical College in terms of what comes from the county and what comes from other sources?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn that over, if you don't mind, to our, our chief financial officer, our vice president for chief, uh, for finance, I guess is what it is. Your Debbie Walker, please, yes.
Good afternoon, I'm Debbie Walker. I'm the vice president for business at Midlands Tech. Um, our makeup of our funding is um about sixty percent is tuition and fees and um twelve percent state funds and uh about twelve percent county funds. And then we have some federal funding as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, not really a question, but I wanted to say thank you for your excitement with the um, with the training, the specialized training, um, especially in my district. You know, I've got American Steel, I've got Westinghouse, um, I've got Service Solutions. I know mighty District Pugh has Scout down there. But with Sub, Subvamo coming and investing a hundred and forty-five million, I want to say thank you for that because it means a lot. And those machines are football fields long and they go from one end to the other end. And thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brenham, you recognize?
Thank you. So, uh, your, your slide, uh, with the budget request, the operating at eight point three million, is that, that, that's just what you're asking of Richland County?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. What's the total operating budget as you've proposed it?
So the total is fourteen million, two eighteen, two oh one.
And that, that's just for operation of facilities?
Yes, sir. That's facilities, that's grounds, construction, um, utilities, infrastructure, technology, housekeeping.
And then, uh, what about the bigger number where that includes all your revenue? Tuition, state, county, and the federal funds?
Um, state funding uh supports a small portion of salaries. And then tuition and fees cover the rest, plus some supplies.
Sixty percent of your revenue is from tuition, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir.
So what's the total revenue projected?
Right at about a hundred million.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, I just want to take the time, this opportunity to thank everybody for doing the presentations and um for coming out and answering our questions. Um, please, if there's any information that we ask to have returned, if you can get it to us as soon as possible, we would greatly appreciate it. Our entertaining motion for number five?
It's a move.
Second.
That's a motion for adjournment. It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, can you call for the vote, please?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Alene?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We're now adjourned.